...and without compromising the speed and performance that's needed for these officers to do their duties on a daily basis.
It's exciting to get a car that is made and designed to the specifications that you give somebody, you know, it's not, this is not just an off-the-shelf product.
The vehicles are still undergoing testing by the LAPD. LAPD officials say the department is committed to purchasing 300 hybrid and hybrid electric plug-in vehicles by 2020. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The responder can accelerate from 0 to 60 miles per hour in 5.8 seconds while getting 38 miles to a gallon. Well, get set to enter an alternate reality. Virtual and augmented reality are rapidly changing the way we work and play. Gil Reyes shows us from the L.A. Convention Center.
Strap on your Oculus Rift goggles for what could be the ride of your life. The virtual reality L.A. Expo, now in its third year.
We had maybe 50, 100 people at the first one. We weren't sure, was anybody gonna show up? Who's got a headset in L.A.? And now we're the world's largest expo for VR.
Start shooting.
Here's how gaming looks in our regular world. No big deal, right? But here's how it looks in the augmented world. A total body experience that blends the real environment with virtual 3D images coming at you and your friends. In another application, the company called Mindshow allows people to create, star in, and film their own 3D animation. L.A. This Week's very own Rich Samuels creates and lives out his own cartoon character.
L.A. This Week rocks! L.A.!
Fun and games aside, architects are also using the technology to offer previews of development at construction sites.
It helps bridge the gap between an architect's vision and what the building is actually going to look like. It helps people who walk by a construction site. They see this cool banner, they pull up their phone, and then they get to see what the building's gonna look like before it's being built.
The company called Kilograph also offers hints of what Silver Lake Reservoir will look like once it's refilled with water, complete with a brief history on the lake. In another part of the expo, visual artists are using reality technology to create therapeutic music videos. The visionary art zone is a place to showcase work and simply chill.
A little healing of the soul and be really inspired to go back to the real world, as we call it, and to maybe be more in alignment with decisions and actions that they take and relationships that they have.
I feel just really fortunate, I think, right place in the right time for the interest around entertainment and the intersection of entertainment technology and what this medium can potentially offer.
At the VR L.A. Expo at the L.A. Convention Center, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
While those were just some of the hundreds of new VR and AR experiences out there, and more are coming, including exciting applications for teaching and public safety training. But creative technology and innovation are also transforming the medical field and changing the way patients get health care while cutting hospital costs at the same time. Anna Marcos takes a look at the Cedar Sinai Accelerator program and its final event at the Skirball Center.
Want to fill your nursing shifts at the touch of a cyber button? Or take your own blood pressure and send it digitally to your own doctor? It's all possible here. You're looking at the last day of a very high-tech medical boot camp, the Cedar Sinai Accelerator, where Cedar Sinai Hospital partners with young entrepreneurs making the latest medical products.
Well, the patients get better care, and so the patients will have access to great technology, really cutting-edge innovative technology.
The three-month tech boot camp allows these startups to get insider access to hospitals, doctors, and nurses so they can pick their brains on how health care works and then build better medical products.
So if your physician is tracking a patient for, say, diabetes or heart failure, whatever the case may be, traditionally, they have to rely on a patient writing things down. With us, every time that a patient takes a reading with a medical device, like their blood sugar or their blood pressure, that comes immediately back to their physician. So it's a mobile application that works on an iPad or an iPhone or an Android device that simply press "Start," it takes their readings, and that's captured and shared with their physician.
Another company, Frame Health, uses a personality test to let the doctor know how to talk to you and get you to take your medications.
If we find somebody who has a personality where they like things very formal, it'll say, "Hi." We'll send them a mobile message, and it'll say, "Hi, this is Dr. Kim. I expect you to take your blood sugar reading within 10 minutes." Okay? Now, when that same message goes out to somebody who thinks like an engineer, it says, "Hi, this is Dr. Kim. If you give me accurate data, I can adjust your medication with great precision."
Eight entrepreneurs have been picked this time around, and this is a program with lifelong perks.
They also invest $120,000 into each company. So, but more valuable was the time that we were able to spend with executives, with nurses, with doctors, understanding what their problems are and how we can solve them.
So now Cedar Sinai Hospital and some lucky startups are lifelong partners with the added benefit of better medical care for the patients. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Cedar Sinai Accelerator program is powered by a company called Techstars. Turning now to our homeless crisis, some city officials say it's the number-one issue facing the city. Rasha Goel has more on an organization that's doing its part to help end homelessness in Los Angeles.
Their goal: to get 100,000 homeless people in homes by the year 2020, and they are starting now. The organization PATH, People Assisting the Homeless, recently broke ground for PATH Metro Villas, a new housing complex that will help people who are struggling on the streets.
We are building three different apartment buildings. Obviously, we can't really do it all at once, so we're building it in three phases, just three buildings.
The PATH Metro Villas are being built on existing land on Madison Avenue in Los Angeles. This is one of the first major developments to result from Measure H and Measure HHH, both which help with funding housing for homeless.
We don't have to go far from this location to find people that need housing and the services, the clinical services that they need because of mental health issues.
PATH Metro Villas will integrate housing, employment, health care, and other supportive services. The project has been a collaborative effort between varying agencies.
United Healthcare is proud to be the largest investor in the PATH Metro Villas. This is a model community that really showcases how public and private sectors together can make a difference.
When completed, there will be a total of 187 apartments as part of PATH Metro Villas, but for now, they are building 65 apartments here and anticipate to open by next year. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
PATH Metro Villas will serve homeless individuals, low-wage earners, and veterans. Well, switching gears now to students who don't have to graduate to begin working in emerging technical fields. Gil Reyes shows us from a recent job fair at L.A. Trade Tech College.
Student Gallo Vasquez has dreams of one day becoming a civil engineer for the city of L.A. He knows good-paying jobs are out there, citing the city's plan to earthquake retrofit thousands of buildings.
L.A. is a really old city, so sooner or later, we're gonna have to remodel everything. Like, we're prone to, like, earthquakes and all that.
He and other students from Orthopedic Medical Magnet High School are among the 2,000 job seekers, making the rounds at L.A. Construction and Associated Careers Day, the event hosted by L.A. Trade Tech College, which has close ties to the building trades and the jobs they offer. And that includes paid student internships on the way to graduation.
So where the student can be working, making money, and getting credit. So even sometimes, if it doesn't take you two years, it might take you two years and a half or three years, at least you're working on something you love.
With a shot at being hired full-time later. One student employer is LAX.
And the salary's not bad, yeah. They'll start out, again, as internships, but it could be anywhere between $15 and $20 an hour.
For an internship?
For an internship.
And then from there, they can move on up?
Oh, absolutely.
And how high up can they do that?
Oh, endless. I mean, you know, we've seen students start out as interns and then eventually become managers and then, uh, you know, running their own companies.
Also hiring is construction company Swinton Builders.
We're looking to recruit from college-educated students, also craft. So we hire, since we're a general contractor, we hire all trades.
And do you hire right on the spot?
We haven't yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if we did.
Tech students go booth-to-booth, weighing their options, like possible careers in solar technology and alternative fuels.
It's really nice to see what my opportunities are.
Yeah, I'm gonna just keep on going around and then think of which one's the best route.
So for these particular job seekers, this is the place to be in the city of Los Angeles. Consider that throughout its 92-year history, L.A. Trade Tech College has offered more career technical programs than any other community college west of the Mississippi. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
L.A. Trade Tech also offers courses in carpentry, welding, culinary arts, and fashion design. And if those careers don't interest you, how about becoming a firefighter? If you're a young woman, you may just have the spark it takes to become an L.A. City firefighter. A group of young ladies certainly thinks so, as they put their bodies to the test at a recent training camp for females ages 14 to 18. Gil Reyes shows us.
Not just pretty in pink, they're out to prove they're just as good, if not better, than the guys.
Women do have the ability to become a firefighter, and it does take a lot of strength and courage to become a firefighter.
The L.A. City Fire Department hosts a two-day girls' training camp in Panorama City. An introduction to firefighting, it's also a way to encourage more young women to join the department, which at last count was just 3% female.
LAFD wants more women because we know the positive impacts that women bring to any organization. So by increasing the women within the LAFD, we know that we can provide better service to the community just by bringing more diversity.
You guys gotta smile.
But can these young women handle the physical demand?
You got it, you got it, you got it.
For starters, they'll have to strap on 70 pounds of gear for a typical firefight. Councilmember Nuri Martinez, a huge supporter of more opportunities for women, grew up in this section of the San Fernando Valley.
When I was growing up, I don't remember ever seeing a woman firefighter until I was an adult. So it's really important to ensure that our young girls in our city can meet other firefighter women, be involved in fire camp, hopefully get involved with our Fire Cadet program and our Fire Academy Magnet Schools.
Firefighter Magnet programs are happening at Wilson High School in El Surino and Banning High School in San Pedro. There are also youth fire academies at several fire stations, and of course, there's this once-a-year girls' camp.
So the parents, pay attention to win these camps and opportunities come up and have your young daughters come out and participate.
In Panorama City, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Councilmember Martinez wants to expand girls' camp to twice a year. She's encouraging more local businesses to come forward to help fund the program. Well, it was a day of giving as the community passed out much-needed items to people who are homeless, but this charity event also highlighted the importance of giving back. Rasha Goel has more.
Haircuts, shoes, and clothes were just some of the goodies attendees received at this annual charity event put on by the Union Rescue Mission.
We have lots of people experiencing homelessness down here on Skid Row, and it's important that they receive the necessary supplies they need, like hygiene kits, food, but most importantly, to build relationships.
A school group also participated with students passing out duffel bags, giving the children an opportunity to learn about the importance of giving back.
It's very helpful. Uh, it's just, it's a great blessing.
You wouldn't recognize all the people that need help like this. It's incredible.
For some, these small gifts are a gesture of kindness that go a long way.
There's so many people here that do have needs, and it's wonderful when you see humanity help humanity. And in such a marvelous way, you're giving them duffel bags that have style.
This isn't something that the Union Rescue Mission does alone. We have a lot of partners, volunteers, and organizations that donate supplies, money, time, uh, to help put this event together.
For many here, it's an opportunity to regain their self-value, spirit, and dignity. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Well, he's the first African-American baseball player to truly impact the game. The Dodgers organization immortalizes the late, great Jackie Robinson with a magnificent sculpture. Gil Reyes shows us.
One, two, three.
The blue curtain drops at Dodger Stadium to reveal a majestic statue of Hall of Famer Jackie Robinson, the man who broke Major League Baseball's color barrier. Dodgers co-owner Magic Johnson says he's elated.
This is one of the greatest days of my life, to be associated with the Dodgers and to honor an American hero, a guy who deserves to have a statue, and it's also great for our fans.
Exchanging a hug during the ceremony were Robinson's widow, Rachel Robinson, and retired Dodgers announcer, Vin Scully. Jackie Robinson played second base for the Brooklyn Dodgers from 1947 to 1956. He was Rookie of the Year, a six-time All-Star, and became MLB's first African-American Most Valuable Player. He also played in six World Series, most notably stealing home in the Dodgers' 1955 championship win over the New York Yankees. And he did it all with class, despite heightened prejudice in Major League Baseball at the time. Though Robinson retired before the Dodgers moved to L.A., the statue by artist Branley Cadet will stand at Chavez Ravine, a lasting tribute to #42's athleticism and, more importantly, his strength of character. At Dodger Stadium, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
His legacy also continues with the Jackie Robinson Foundation. Over the past 40 years, it's provided financial aid and mentorship to 1,500 students. While city officials take steps to expand homeless shelters, the city hosts an Earth Day celebration and helping building owners retrofit their properties. All this in City B. To help people who are living on the street find shelter and assistance, the L.A. City Council approved a shelter crisis declaration authored by Councilmember Jose Huizar and Councilmember Mike Vannan. This will allow the city to open more shelter facilities to help get an estimated 28,000 people who are homeless off the street. This vote is a key step in a series of responses to the homelessness crisis. A planning committee recently recommended removing self-imposed city instructions, including ordinance language that previously only allowed a shelter crisis to be declared during winter months and limited them to 120 days a year, among other restrictions. Councilmember Jose Huizar said the vote gives the city the ability to act on that crisis in the short term while giving hope, help, and service to people who desperately need it. Mother Earth was the star of the show during L.A. Sanitation's Second Annual Citywide Earth Day L.A. Festival held at Exposition Park. More than 50 exhibits dedicated to promoting sustainability were on display, including family-friendly activities. Kids got to explore city vehicles, learn about seed planting, and lots of mulch was given away. There was also plenty of entertainment on the stage, including performances from Tommy the Clown and other musical acts. Some families even picked up some plants and trees.
It's a day to celebrate the earth and the environment, really educate people, and promote, uh, the goals of sustainability and healthy living.
The Second Annual Seismic retrofit Resource Fair, sponsored by the mayor's office, was held recently at the L.A. Convention Center. The fair provided information, materials, and resources for owners of soft story and concrete buildings who must comply with the recent mandatory retrofit ordinance for these types of buildings.
Retrofit is very important because it'll strengthen buildings and could keep them from collapsing, uh, that'll prevent injuries, and also will make it a lot quicker for people to get back inside their buildings if an earthquake happens.
Well, each month, the historic core of downtown L.A. gets transformed into a cutting-edge block party with plenty of the latest art for all tastes. Anna Marcos takes a look at a special downtown art walk, which honors World Art Day this month.
There were some mighty big bunnies hopping about, but then anything artsy goes at L.A.'s Downtown Art Walk. This month also focuses on World Art Day, which is observed throughout the world.
I think the Downtown Art Walk is really a connector. It's a way for people to interact with art, uh, in a very personal way. I think a lot of people are thrown off a little bit by the really sort of clinical white box gallery. A lot of the gallery owners are very open to talking to people about, uh, the art, the artists, the exhibitions.
About 40 galleries take part in the monthly art walk, which draws about 3,500 people in just a few hours. The event has become so popular, many fans are clamoring for performance art as well. And organizers and artists are giving it to them, as in this mandala project in which regular old people help create art.
Tonight, we are actually creating a circle with people, a human mandala, where everybody's laying on the floor in a circle, connected and together in unity for a few minutes.
And the regular old people love it, too.
You gotta get involved in the art in Los Angeles, you know what I mean? It's all a part of the culture, and I really love it.
Uh, just having fun, uh, taking in the experience, doing something different with my homies.
So this is art for homies, bunnies, and regular old people like you and me. And if you miss these masterpieces, no worries. It all happens again on the second Thursday of every month. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
DJs, specialty cocktails, and great food were also part of the fun. Well, enjoy cupcakes and other sweets while helping out a good cause, check out the work of local artists during an art show, and help spruce up a middle school in Tarzana. All this in this week's Things to Do. The Sugar and Stilettos Charitable Foundation raises awareness and funds for the West Side Food Bank to help end the issue of hunger and food insecurity in L.A. Through an annual bake sale, which brings together the best bakeries, restaurants, and shopping in town, Sugar and Stilettos has raised over 200,000 since its first event in 2011. The highlight each year is the crowning of Mr. Sugar and Stilettos, where a well-known personality dons a pair of stilettos, a tiara, and a sash for a good cause. The family-friendly event is full of fun, laughs, and plenty of sweet treats. It all takes place May 13 from 1 to 4 p.m. at 2306 Midvale Avenue in West L.A. The Rotary Art Show features local and regional artists exhibiting and selling their original artwork twice a year. Since 1969, the Rotary Club of Studio City Sherman Oaks has hosted this biannual art show in May, over Mother's Day weekend and the second weekend in October. This show has been held for over 40 years and has been a successful event for artists and art lovers alike. Between 90 and 120 hand-selected artists successfully exhibit their artwork during this two-day event. An estimated 3,000 visitors attend the show each day. Every year, numerous charity organizations benefit from the funds raised by the volunteers of the Rotary Club. The ultimate beneficiaries of these events are people in need. The art show takes place May 13 and 14 from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. at Moore Park Park in Studio City. For more, visit rotaryartshow.org. Join friends of the Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies for a fun campus-wide beautification day. Volunteers are needed to help revamp their existing garden and create an outdoor classroom for educational use by the elementary, sixth, and seventh-grade science classes and culinary classes. They will also be cleaning and painting to add lots of color on campus. The beautification event takes place on May 13 from 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. at the Sherman Oaks Center for Enrich Studies located at 18605 Irwin Street in Tarzana. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
If everybody would please take their seats. Today is Tuesday, May 9th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Coetz moves, and Mr. Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Could I ask everyone to please rise? We'll be led in our flag salute today by Mr. Weezer.
Place your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Madam Clerk, let's quickly run through the agenda. First order of business on the agenda.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed. Items 1D, E, F, and I, as the liens have been paid in full. And Item 1H, as the property ownership has changed.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all three items.
All right, we'll hold those items. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to continue Item 2 to June 30th, please.
Okay, so without objection, we'll continue that item. Madam Clerk, please continue.
Items 4 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held. A Corrected Planning and Land Use Management Committee report has been posted and distributed for Item Number 5.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Yes, Mr. President, we'd like to hold Item 5. We have an amending motion coming.
Let's hold 5. And I'm informed to hold Item 4 as well. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll to have you late to vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Items 10 through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
Items 15 through 17 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
We'll hold those items for now. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to request that our Chair of Public Safety, President Pro Tem Mitch Englander, come and take the chair. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President and members.
He's going to say it again, "members." So, don't wait for it. I'm going to start calling you out individually.
We have...I wasn't going to say anything.
I was.
I wasn't going to say anything about Mr. Price. I was not. All of us, everybody that's here in these chambers, all of the council members, everybody that's in this building all over, we've all had remarkable things occur in our lives. And Lord knows, I have had my share. But 15 years ago, I had an opportunity to travel to the town of my birth, Cleveland, Ohio, and meet the then owners of the Cleveland Browns. And for those of you that know me know that regardless if they win one game or two games, I am a Cleveland Brown football fan, you know, do or die. I was so excited about this trip. I was Speaker of the California State Assembly at the time. I was so excited that my staff decided to surprise me. So, they contacted the councilman from the district where I used to live in Cleveland, Ohio, and they contacted the mayor of that great city. And when I arrived, I received Mr. Coetz a police escort. And it was a good police escort. It wasn't like the couple that I received when I was a teenager. This was a great police escort, and I was taken to City Hall, where I was honored by the mayor and by the city council for, you know, kind of like the hometown kid done-good type situation. And I had my aunts there, and it was just so great to see how excited they were. And then I met our colleagues from Cleveland, Ohio, and they gave me this beautiful resolution. And on the resolution, the very, very last name is Zone. Z-O-N-E, Zone. Mr. Zone had been elected to the Cleveland City Council for maybe a few months at best. And it is my honor to present to you not only our colleague from the Cleveland, Ohio City Council, but the president of the National League of Cities, and that's Matt Zone. Let's give him a round of applause. I think there's approximately 19,000 cities that he works with. 19,000 cities, towns, and villages with a population of over 218 million people. So, he has been elected president of this fine organization. He was going to be honored today by our dear friend Joe Buscaino, who had to go to Sacramento for a funeral. So, it was my honor to kind of pinch-hit, because I'm proud. When you're born and raised in Cleveland, Ohio, there's a very special pride that you get. Plus, since Matt and I are the same height, I feel a special kinship to this guy. But what you...you know, Matt, he was born...I don't think he had a choice. He had to be a public servant. It's in his blood, it's in his DNA. His father was a councilman. In fact, his father, members, was the only white councilperson to support Carl Stokes, who became the first black mayor of a major city. And his dad stood toe-to-toe with this man. His father unfortunately passed away. And his mother, Mary, was then appointed to take over the council seat. And she was appointed by a man who I grew up idolizing. His name was George Forbes. He was the president of the Los Angeles City Council... Of the Cleve...I'm sorry. Of the Cleveland City Council. But he was a tough guy, and he was a brother, and he tried to bring people together, and he was very close with the Zone family. So, it's not a surprise that this guy would then just enter the family business and become a councilman himself. Mr. Englander, Mr. Zone, is the chair of their safety committee. If Matt served with us, members, today, he'd be a leader on immigration rights, okay? He'd be a leader in trying to build affordable housing for those who need it. He is a leader's leader, a member's president, and just a good guy. He has a son, Mr. Englander, who just recently became a member of the Cleveland Police Department. So, his whole family has a burning desire to be public servants. And we're also joined today by his nephew, who is named after my middle name, Jason. Where's Jason? Let's give Jason and his wife a round of applause. They live in Mr. Coetz's district. But anyway, it is my honor, members. I would have never thought 15 years ago, when I went before the Cleveland City Council, and I felt so much pride, and I was so honored, that I would have an opportunity in return to give a resolution to one of the members who gave a resolution to me. So, it's my honor to present to you the councilman from the 15th Ward and the president of the National League of Cities, Matt Zone.
And as a...let me just pipe it. Well, first of all, Mr. Wesson, I think the police escort was to keep an eye on you. I'm just saying. But it's nice that you were in the front seat. So, and Matt, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here and for what you do for National League of Cities. I will tell you, when you walked in to these chambers, Avak, who's standing over here, was in awe, because he has been involved with the National League of Cities, I think then when they were first created over 100 years ago. Avak used to escort, in fact, our mayor, Tom Bradley, when he was the president of the National League of Cities. the National League of Cities. In fact, the last President from Los Angeles on NLC. And so we've all been very involved. I'm on the Public Safety Steering Committee as well, and truly appreciate your leadership and for you being here. And I'm sure Jason and his lovely wife, who are here, are just honored to celebrate their vacation time coming to council meetings wherever they go, I'm sure. And, but we welcome you here. We've got another member on the queue before I wanna turn it over to you, Mr. Bob Lumenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Matt, just wanted to sing your praise a little bit. I got to meet you at the last League of Cities conference, and before I actually met you in person, I heard you speak to the entire conference, and it was, it was very dynamic. And this is a time when we just had the change in administrations, and all of the cities and the council members are on edge trying to figure out how are we gonna survive in this new world?
Right.
And, and you've hammered home many points, but about, about how we can stick together as cities and, and how our strength comes from our, our, our shared local values. And I just thought that was great, and then we got to spend some time together, and I got to know you as, as a dynamic individual who's not only active in League of Cities, but in the DMO, Democratic Municipal Officials, and, and are out there making a difference, not just in your city, but you're thinking big picture about all cities and how we can all improve. So, thank you for being here, and we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. And I know, when you speak, you're gonna talk about Los Angeles next year.
Yes.
And that you're coming back.
That's right.
Because we are hosting NLC.
Yes, you are.
So you're gonna plug that, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
All right, yes. Welcome, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. It's always good to be in the presence of an amazing, world-class city council. And to be next, beside my side of, of my friend and, and certainly one of my political mentors, somebody who I've studied from afar, Council President Herb Wesson, it's certainly a high honor. The work that your city is doing is extraordinary. And as Council President Wesson said on behalf of nineteen thousand cities, towns, and villages across America, cities are more important now more than ever. We hear what's happening and what's coming out of Washington, and it really doesn't resonate with the people who we serve every day. And I had early exposure, when I first became a council member, you know, my background is in planning, and I love the built environment, and I always wanted to study and learn and grow as a policymaker. And I remember walking in that first day to the council president and said, what, where can I get involved in so I can grow and learn as a policymaker? And he said, "Talk to our city clerk, but there's this organization called the National League of Cities. You need to get involved with this organization." And so I did, and went to my first conference in December of 2002 in Salt Lake City, and I was just blown away by the content, the policy work, the advocacy work. And soon thereafter, the following year, I was in Nashville, Tennessee, and I ran into a former city council president, Eric Garcetti. And Eric and I became fast friends, and he got me involved with the DMO. Eventually, he was the President of the DMO, and I was the Vice President. And so I got to work along Eric's side for about six years, and, and grew and developed a close working relationship with your mayor, and he's a, a great municipal leader. And over the last three years, almost four, I became very close with Council Member Buscaino. And, and I think it's admirable of, of, of the work that we do. Public service is an honorable profession, and we need honorable people with high content and high character serving in these positions. And the only reason your colleague Buscaino is not with you today is because he serves as a big brother, and later this morning, he's gonna be eulogizing the tragic death of a young man who has not only Joe impacted his life, this young man has impacted Council Member Buscaino. So I think about Joe often. And if not for the strong advocacy of Council Member Buscaino and your council president and this entire city council, the National League of Cities probably would not be coming to your city in 2018. So November 2018, next year, we'll be back in your great city, bringing approximately four to five thousand mayors and council members and policymakers from around the country here to learn about what makes Los Angeles unique. I mean, you are building an inclusive community, and we need that now more than ever. You are leading on so many important, critical issues that Washington is not leading on, whether it's climate change, or taking a stance on Citizens United, or dealing with sanctuary cities. You know, I was proud the day after Mayor Garcetti and other of our colleagues came out and spoke against pulling back federal block grant funding and other funds because of the designation of being a welcoming and accepting community. Those communities are safer. And so the National League of Cities, within hours, we put out a statement, I put out a statement, supporting your work in that effort. The work is monumental that we need to do, and protecting cities is extremely important. You know, there's one thing that I get to do, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be wrapping up shortly here. Each NLC president gets to pick an issue that they wanna champion. Last year, our NLC president chose opioid and heroin abuse, and they formed a task force, they authored a white paper, and did many speaking around this scourge, this healthcare crisis. It is a healthcare crisis, not a law enforcement crisis, what's happening with opioid and heroin abuse. This year, after watching the most divisive election I can remember in my lifetime, and probably most of our lifetimes, unfolding in 2016, that's further polarizing this country, I chose a, a, a topic that is really important that Los Angeles City Council has been a leader on, and that's economic mobility and opportunity. And we formed a task force. I asked the mayor of Atlanta, Kasim Reed, a great municipal leader, to chair that task force, pointed Mitchell Farrow from your council to serve on that task force. He's doing amazing work, and your voice is represented there. And we're leading on those issues. It's always nice when you're away and you can have family by your side. And I have my nephew, Jason Zone Fisher, who's a very accomplished young man, and his beautiful wife, Caitlin Fisher, who's a very successful businesswoman. And these two, to have them here by my side and be with me is really great, to be recognized by their LA City Council. I love the two of them. And Mr. President Pro Tem, and my dear friend, Mr. President, it's such an honor to be here with all of you. Thank you for supporting the National League of Cities, and thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of the city.
All right, let's give a big round of applause. Now, thank you very much for being here, Mr. Mayor. As you're presenting that, by the way, I wanna just put another plug in. I mean, I'm, I'm so grateful that we're hosting next year. The worst part of that, as you well know, because you've hosted as well, is you don't get to go somewhere else. But, well, but, but with that, I will tell you, what we get out of NLC, the things that we bring back, just me personally, we now have a nurse practitioner unit. We got that out of NLC. We now have performance-based budgeting. We got that out of NLC. We have, on what you took on, and what I brought back from the Public Safety Steering Committee on opioid use, we now have Narcan distributed by our firefighters, and they all carry it now, and deploying that with LAPD. I mean, all the things that come out of NLC, you truly are, have been a great leader for the organization. We, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, now, on behalf of Mr. Buscaino and myself, I get to return the favor, Matt. This is just something that you can put on your wall. Whenever I come back to visit you, I wanna look and see it. Anyway, let's give Matt another round of applause.
All right, we've got a, another special presentation by Council Member Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members. Today, we celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week in our city, and in recognition of the unique and importance of tourism plays in our economic development, I'd like to invite to the table the LA Tourism and Convention Board to share a special presentation about the state of tourism in Los Angeles. We've got the President and CEO of the Board, Ernie Wooden, Jr., and staff. The Chair, Alan Rothenberg, is with us. Secretary Treasurer, Carl Schuster. And the Tourism Board member and Chairman of the Tourism Marketing Division, Javier Cano is with us. And I just wanna acknowledge the Convention Center GM, Donnie Lewis, with us. He's in the house. But, Mr. Wooden, the floor is yours.
And before you open it up, I think it's fitting, particularly given, we just saw the numbers that have come out, and I'm sure you're gonna walk us through some of that. And, but before we do that, you would all be impressed to know that we have a special group just happens to be here today, and that is the, the International Travel and Tourism Association of California, which was recently formed. And we'd like for them to take a, stand up, please, and be recognized. The ITTAC is here today for LA City Hall Advocacy Day, and they have over already a hundred and fifty members. And one of the things they're doing is they're working with us to make sure that the travel guides and those folks that come here to bring international tourists are safe and well-represented. And they have done a phenomenal job, already headed up by a great group of people as well. So we wanna thank you for, for being here, and you might wanna stick around for this presentation, because I think you couldn't have timed it better. And so thank you so much for being here. We'll kick it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Councilman Price. It's a delight, and members of City Council, it is a delight for us to be here. I'm sorry. It is a delight for us to be here this morning to begin a very special week for us, the National Travel and Tourism Week. I'm Ernest Wooden, as Councilman Price mentioned. I'm the President and CEO of the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board, and it's a perfect time for us to bring City Council, as we do every year, up to date on what is happening in the world of tourism in our fine city. Many of you know that it wasn't too long ago that we joined Mayor Garcetti and Councilman Kukorian at Universal Studios Hollywood earlier this year to announce our sixth consecutive year of tourism growth. In fact, we announced that we welcomed more than forty-seven point three million visitors to Los Angeles, making us one of the top international destinations in the entire world. Today, we're here to announce what that really meant to LA, because the numbers have now completely settled in, and our outside consultants have been busy counting up the dollars. What it's meant, of those forty-seven million people, they spent twenty-one point nine billion dollars, with a B, on our area hotels, attractions, restaurants, retail, and more. They tell me to fully understand the economic impact of that, you've gotta multiply the direct spend by an econometric number that says that it was an impressive thirty-three point six billion dollars in total economic impact on Los Angeles and its environs, which represents a six point three percent increase over 2015.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Javier Cano, and I am the General Manager of the JW Marriott here in downtown Los Angeles. Also, I am on the Tourism Board, as well as being the Chairman of the Tourism Marketing District here in Los Angeles, which is comprised of a number of hotels here in the city of LA. And as you know, the Tourism Marketing District has been critical in the ability to be able to market Los Angeles, not only domestically, but internationally. And this is really good news for tourism. We've been able to generate two point six billion dollars in state and local revenues in the year 2016. And importantly to the city of Los Angeles, the hospitality industry generated two hundred and sixty-eight million dollars in TOT contributions to the general fund last year. And with budgets on everyone's mind, it is noteworthy to mention that the TOT collections have increased by fifty-seven percent over the last four years, from a hundred and seventy million to two hundred and sixty-eight million for this last year.
Good morning, I'm Carl Schuster. As a board member and also a partner with Wolfgang Pock, I know how important tourism is to the restaurant industry, and would also like to underscore the profound impact tourism has on our area jobs. Tourism now supports more than five hundred and ten thousand jobs within the county's leisure and hospitality sector, one of the area's largest and strongest sectors. Today, that represents one in nine jobs in Los Angeles County. Last year, our industry contributed to the, an addition of twenty-one thousand four hundred new jobs, which is a four point four percent increase over previous year.
Good morning, I'm Alan Rothenberg, and I have the honor of chairing the Tourism Board. Excuse me. Throughout my career, I've been involved in international organizations, particularly in the sports world, including the Olympic Committee and FIFA, the World Soccer Organization. So I know firsthand the importance of international travel. It's interesting to note that while approximately twenty percent of our visitors are international visitors, they account for thirty-two percent of the overnight stays, which of course is vitally important. I think we should also recognize where these people come from. Number one is Mexico. After that, yeah, after that come China, Canada, Australia, and the UK. Diversity and inclusivity have always been the cornerstone of Los Angeles. We are truly the, the city that rolls out the red carpet for the whole globe. And as the city's official tourism marketing organization, there's never been a more critical time to reinforce that message, given everything that's going on in our country. And we wanna make sure that visitors from all over the world know that they're welcome here, and to do that, we have initiated a welcoming initiative, which we wanna outline for you now. Ernie?
This is, in fact, one of the most exciting things that the Tourism Board has done. Recently, the Tourism Board authored an international study to look at global sentiment about coming to the United States and to Los Angeles. Tourism Economics was the independent research partner that we used, and their estimate was that because of the negative sentiment of travel to the United States, it could impact Los Angeles by more than eight hundred thousand visitors over the next three years, costing the city of Los Angeles more than seven hundred and thirty-six million dollars, almost three-quarters of a billion dollars of lost spending. This was significant for the Tourism Board, and I'm pleased to say that the Tourism Board, which is very focused on our local businesses and families that are employed in the hospitality industry, took the initiative to launch what we called a welcome campaign. This campaign underscores the importance of LA's diversity and inclusivity, and we recently launched this Everyone is Welcome Initiative with an inspiring video. And when I tell you the numbers about this video, it's really gonna shock you, but before I do, I wanna show you this inspiring video, which you'll note has no one speaking but paper planes, which are indigenous to various places around the world. Can we roll the video? The reaction to this emotional video around the world has been incredible. Despite having launched it only two weeks ago, more than twelve million people have seen that video. In fact, within the first twenty-four hours, three million people saw it. What's interesting about the video was that fifty percent of the views were, for my friends in the back of the room, from Mexico. We love that. In total, our cumulative reach for this video and this initiative has reached more than four hundred million people and counting in two weeks. Three hundred and fifty million in earned media impressions, including coverage in USA Today, Billboard, Adweek, and Los Angeles Times. And forty-four million impressions are from our own media, including support from key opinion leaders, including the LA Dodgers, Mayor Garcetti, LA24, many of you who have repeated it. We're incredibly proud of the emotional chord that we seem to have struck, and the fact is that this is our very first in-house campaign. But what happened on Saturday, just Saturday, two days ago, was incredible. We didn't want to just tell people that everyone is welcome. That's why this past Saturday, members of our community...
The LA Tourism Board says many people around the world feel hesitant to come to the US and Los Angeles after the travel ban and other politically charged dialogue. This is meant to change that.
We wanted to send a message to the world that Los Angeles was rolling out its red carpet. We're still the ideal place that you want to come visit.
The entire process was documented and will be broadcast over social media, intending to spread awareness and--
Look around, and maybe you'll find someone who's happy that you're here.
And show the world there is a friend just outside their window.
And I know on these airplanes, that mothers and children and fathers that look out the airplane and they see what Los Angeles is doing, they will never, ever forget it.
In Los Angeles, I'm Darsha Phillips, ABC 7 Eyewitness News.
And the Tourism Board would like to thank the City Council for the opportunity to bring you up-to-date on what's happening in the world of tourism. Thank you.
No, we appreciate it. No, thank you. And actually, it's, I think it, you know, I don't know if I believe in irony, but we've got, you know, the new Tourism Board, that our community group that just came in the industry, but also the Mr. Sister Cities and the, who was always the tourism king here in Los Angeles, Tom LaBonde, our council member, a great council member, Tom LaBonde. Happened to be here as well, so I don't think anything happens on accident. And like to, like to now ask Mr. Bonin to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation, for the report and the update. Thank you for the amazing event on Saturday. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it. I've heard amazing things about it from my constituents who attended. But I really wanted to thank you for that video. I'm watching it for the second time on my iPhone right now. Over the 20 years of working with the city as an elected and as a chief of staff prior, I constantly gave feedback to Convention and Visitors Bureau staff, to Patty and to others, about what I saw as some of the shortcomings of the marketing. One, I've historically complained that there was too much Santa Monica and not enough Venice. I saw the Venice Pier. I saw Windward Avenue. Thank you very much. I've commented that I thought it didn't reflect the real Los Angeles. I remember the last one was a bunch of people drinking fancy fruit drinks out of martini glasses at nightclubs and stuff, and it was all glamour, and it didn't feel like the neighborhoods of Los Angeles. It didn't highlight the public art that we have in Los Angeles with the different cultures. This did that. I'm looking at it again now. I was stoked, knowing that this is an international audience, that you feature a gay couple in this. I noted that the detail you put into this, I noticed that in one of the scenes in Venice, one of the skateboarders stops and has coffee with someone in a wheelchair. I mean, this really, I think, more than anything you've done before, feels like Los Angeles and reflects its diversity, and I just want to thank you and commend you for it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the Convention Center and the Tourism Board. Amazing job. Tourism is one of our most, it's one of our largest and most important industries for our local economy here, and I fully support it. And I had the fortunate opportunity to meet with you over a year ago to discuss all the tourism, but I'm even more excited about the conversations we've been having for a long time with you, with the mayor's office, with the Convention Center, and the Tourism Board, about, we do an amazing job of attracting tourists here. But now, we're going to work on, and especially, it's so apt with the tourism tourist, the, what's the word we're going to call it? I'm sorry?
International tourist.
International tourist, tourism, to help with the tourism, where when they come here, we don't just, we also take the next step of helping them have experience, a good time, a good time for all of our tourists from all around the world, as well as next door, as well as to all our communities. So I'm very excited on the new initiatives we're going to work on together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
And Mr. Ru, this is a name that everybody will become familiar with, is the International Travel and Tourism Association of California. So we'll, we'll make sure we embed that in our brains as well. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add to what Mr. Bonin said. I thought that was a remarkable video because it didn't just focus on tourist spots, and it didn't focus on entertainment as much as it focused on the real experience of Los Angeles. And actually, marketing real people in real situations and the welcoming and diversity that you find in Los Angeles, I think, is very difficult to capture, and I haven't seen that before, and I'm actually really surprised at how successfully you did that. I almost didn't think it could be done. And the fact that it's gotten the kind of worldwide response it has is very touching to me. I actually find that to be truly remarkable, and I give you huge kudos for actually reflecting the city in the way that you have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you again. This is so helpful because not only does it qualify and quantify the volume and the dollars and the importance, but as we start looking at our major investments in infrastructure and transportation and public safety, as it relates to the industry and the effects and the impacts and the benefits it brings to this region as a whole, it's so helpful and so important to come forward every year with these numbers and to address this. And it helped particularly now during our budget deliberations. It really, really helps as we start looking at what we need to do and what we need to fund and setting our priorities. So truly appreciate all the great work you all do. So thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Give them all another round of applause. Thank you. to go into the multiple cards first. We have Joe Jimenez on items 13, 15, 16, and 17. And if you wish to speak on item 4, you can do that as well. Joe, you still here? All right, going once? Going twice? Fair and final offer, or gone? All right, so we'll go ahead and note and file that your card was called. And Donna? You want to come on up? Items 1, 13, and 14, and if you, there was a change on item 4, so if you want to speak to item 4 as well, we can add that. So items 1, 13, 14, and 4, if you want to speak on 4.
And the public comment.
After you're done with the multiple items, correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we got number 1 here. There are another, more revenue makers. Did you notice they never say what infractions they did, so others can be warned not to make the same mistakes? Because you want to do it along with the penalties and make it too higher to pay, like the parking tickets and the traffic tickets, so you can use it for expensive, so you can use it for your expenses, time and paper and computer, to have silly agenda items to legislate, to impeach Trump. So that's why we have great big revenue makers, and it'll be just like, "Fee waivers, fee waivers." We're very popular. These liens seem to be very popular. And let's see, we got number 4. I think I'll pass on that. Thank you anyway. And number 13 is build that wall, build that wall, build that wall, build that wall. And number 14, first, I thought that was saying it was okay to walk across when you, when the hand goes up, because they're saying that you couldn't go up when the hand goes up, making it more friendly, more fair to pedestrians. But now, I hear it's just another revenue maker, have cops arrest you if you start walking on the number 6. So let the people cross. We've been crossing on the countdown for a long time, and people, later countdown, they rush it across, so stop being Armani. So unfortunately, that didn't seem to be a very good one. And can I go now to public comment?
Just give her her public, general public.
Okay. Folks, we need to come together, all Americans. Oh, shit. Sorry. I forgot. Oh, mother. Damn it. Folks, we need to come together, all Americans and those naturalized. We have enemies out there who want to hurt us. It won't go across. Okay, um, okay, those, oh, yeah. We have, we have Americans and naturalized. We have enemies out there who like to fight each, who want us to fight each other, conservatives and liberals. We have North Korea's, where there's nuclear capabilities, those who doesn't comply, and Iran, who doesn't comply with the US, thanks to Obama. President, President Trump, you should, you shouldn't speak to Abbas, who really wants a one-state solution. All Islamic Arab Palestinians, an all-Islamic Arab Palestinian state, who's never existed.
Thank you. Thank you. Why don't we get Mr. Walsh? And if I could get Mr. Walsh, you have 1A, 1B, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and because of the changes made to 4, if you'd like to speak on that, you can as well.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential. Number 1, building is safety, doing an, you're doing an excellent job. I've been here since 1976, no complaints. I'm not one of those white-wing people who say you're all a bunch of crooks. When you do a good job. Okay, number 2, this is another liquor license, and when somebody out here watching, someone in your family is going to be run over in a hit-and-run, and you can blame it on this council, where they have more liquor license per square mile than any city in America. Number 10, number 10 is selling the date for hearing objections against weed and brush abatement. They do a terrible job on weed, of brush abatement. Number 11, this concerns changing the name of, name of an area to Congregational Square. I think you should change Hollywood Boulevard to Dope Is Us Square. Incidentally, anybody in America, any kind of marijuana, dope, anything you want, available at lowest prices in the world on Hollywood Boulevard, just snap your fingers and you'll get all the dope you want. That's why tourists come here, to buy dope, to bring it back, and to sell it wherever they live. Number, number 12, this is changing the name of the street to, and as, monsime, incidentally, is misspelled. I guess you don't have anybody up there that speaks Spanish. Monsen, it's totally misspelled. That's the, what you expect from the city clerk. Number 13, provide access to a retaining wall. The walls are falling apart, the retaining walls, and everything in this city is falling apart, and not as slowly as it used to be. Okay, the countdown signal, this is very important. As it stands now, if there's a countdown there and you start across the street, you will be sent a ticket. The only time it's legal to cross the street is when it turns green from red, and when the countdown starts, you cannot cross the street. That gives you out here five goddamn seconds to go, start walking across the street. Five seconds. This bill will change it, and it will add something called reasonable. I'm not calling it reasonable. I'm answering.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you want your general public comment minute? Yes, sir.
John Walsh, as far as the Olympics are concerned, I understand that in Switzerland, where my relatives come from, they have decided not to send the Olympics to America. But I challenge anybody from Switzerland, anybody on the Olympics Committee, and if they vote for it, they give, Switzerland gives US, LA, $1 billion. I challenge you to walk two blocks on, in Skid Row without police protection. I'm going to tell you, all the rapists, the drug dealers, everybody wants the Olympics to come to LA. Now, last time you had it, there weren't too many problems. That's because Tom Bradley was here, and that's, there's 2 million more people living in LA now than then.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman, you have items 1, 3, 10, and 17, and if you'd like to speak on 4, you can as well. 10 through 17, I'm sorry. And if you want to speak on 4, you can.
So it's very apparent that we continue with these liens, but why such denial when you can waive them? The interest, compound interest can be forgiven, and it is up to the rookie to assist in that process on the liens. I'm here in opposition and protest on behalf of the public, who cannot stand here and appeal on their behalf. Now, I'm going to item 2, drinking, more drinking for sale of alcohol and beverages.
Mr. President, the speaker does not have a card on item 2.
Okay, so you have to go to 3, Mr. Herman, 3, and like I said, you can go on 4 if you'd like.
Let me just go to the back here. Let's go to number item, what the city attorney said.
Stay on topic. Stay on topic, Herman.
Item number 12, price relative to naming 15th Street between Normandy Avenue and Kenmore. Who fucking cares? Get something better on the agenda. Item 13, CD1, Mr. Sidio does an excellent job in CD1. He doesn't need the dibble-dwarf Inlander in the motion of this item relative to granting a perpetual non-exclusive easement. So stay out of it. Then into item number 14, consideration of who other than the fat bald guy, Weezer, and Bonin relative to establishing the city's position regarding AB 390. Santiago, SOB, that would authorize a pedestrian facing a countdown signal. Well, nobody wants a countdown. The disabled count, can't count and walk at the same time. All they're interested is getting from point A to point B, which is crossing an intersection. So in note to that roadway, if there is a sufficient time reasonably, LAPD don't qualify for reasonably. For that goddamn reason, I was denied access to the building across the street because I had a countdown signaled across to get to the LAPD Police--
I'm here in opposition and protest on behalf of the public who cannot stand here and appeal on their behalf. Now I'm going to item 2, drinking, more drinking for sale of alcohol and beverages.
Mr. President, the speaker does not have a card on item 2.
Okay, so you have to go to 3, Mr. Herman, 3, and like I said, you can go on 4 if you'd like.
Let me just go to the back here. Let's go to number item, what the city attorney said.
Stay on topic, stay on topic, Herman.
Item number 12, price relative to naming 15th Street between Normandy Avenue and Kenmore. Who fucking cares? Get something better on the agenda. Item 13, CD1, Mr. Sidio does an excellent job in CD1. He doesn't need the dibble-dwarf Inlander in the motion of this item relative to granting a perpetual non-exclusive easement. So stay out of it. Then into item number 14, consideration of who other than the fat bald guy, Weezer, and Bonin relative to establishing the city's position regarding AB 390. Santiago, SOB, that would authorize a pedestrian facing a countdown signal. Well, nobody wants a countdown. The disabled count can't count and walk at the same time. All they're interested is getting from point A to point B, which is crossing an intersection. So in note to that roadway, if there is a sufficient time reasonably, LAPD don't qualify for reasonably. For that goddamn reason, I was denied access to the building across the street because I had a countdown signaled across to get to the LAPD Police Commission, which I was denied. But if the signal would work and I can get across without getting a goddamn jaywalking ticket, then I would be in the right-of-way, crossing safely. You're not safe in LA where the hidden capital world of death. And then item 15, morons, more action to what? The subject of disability discrimination. I'm gonna read it just straight off the record. Quartz of Appeal State, the California Second Appellate District case number B 257890, the Los Angeles Superior Court case number BC 449616. This matter involves a final judgment in the employment case. Stop fucking discriminating under ADA Title 2, 12131.
Okay, your minute, Mr. Herman, your general public comment minute.
So now that Wayne Spiller has made the news in LA City Watch, and we got the fake LA prosecutor, Eugene Hall, what about you, rookie? Are you a part of the criminal element? Come on, rookie. What about Emily Reyes from the LA Times? What about Emily Reyes? Where is she? Hugo Rossetti, where are you? Report for business. You continue to harass, threaten, and prosecute people under fake lies. Stop fucking lying, Herb, and put your name on the record. It's Herman Jason Wesson Jr. In addition to that, fake LA prosecutors continue to threaten people, speaking out their fucking mind here. So today, in recognition of nurses and on behalf of all the nurses who get fucked over by all of you and send patients to their cases, fuck you, LA.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Do we, don't we have a couple of general public comments? If I could get those. Are there any more left? Leslie Hope and Patricia, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Patricia Barrett. I live at Evo in South Park, and I've lived there for seven years. And I'm coming here because there's been an increase in homelessness, an increase in things that have been happening on the streets and things that I don't like to see as a citizen, that we have voted in over $100 million, plus we are being taxed on this, and I don't see anything done. I see it getting worse. And some of the things is, homeless has increased, the acts of violence has increased. I am tired of seeing people peeing at Evo and Luma. I am tired of seeing people also peeing. I am tired of seeing being chased down the street. It's not only me, it's businesses. Spring Street has become Skid Row adjacent, and we need to do something about it. You also need to look at the Downtown Women's Center, which has a 98% success rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can get our next speaker. Please identify yourself.
I'm Leslie Hope, a home-chairing host at my home in Councilmember Bonin's 11th District. Since the 1980s, I've also owned rent-controlled apartments in Councilmember Wesson's 10th District. My son, a constituent of Councilmember Wesson, helps me manage them. I emphasize, my apartments are rented only long-term. I don't intend to ever make them short-term rentals because short-term hosting done right is too labor-intensive on a daily basis. However, I'm proud of my charming 1920s duplexes and a fourplex, and I've always strived to keep them in excellent condition. Despite increasing rents, the cost of maintaining these vintage buildings has increased tremendously in recent years. I've had to use earnings from home-sharing in Councilmember Bonin's District to pay for maintaining and upgrading my long-term rentals in Councilmember Wesson's District. I urge you not to put a cap on the number of days home-sharing is allowed in one's personal residence, so I can continue to maintain my beautiful 1920s-era residential buildings and keep my long-term tenants happy.
Okay, so what we're gonna do now, we're gonna close the public comment on items 3, 4, 5, and 10, and we will continue those items until tomorrow.
And for the record, Mr. President, on items 4 and 5, amending motions have been posted and distributed, and tomorrow's date is May 10.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
The amending motion for item 5 is not a substantive change. The change is to correct the date so that it reflects the correct date of the Plumb
Oh, the card is on item 3. So as you're coming up, let's quickly vote on reconsideration of item 3. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, so that, Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Identify yourself, and I'm sorry for the mix-up.
I'm Matthew Berger, and I live in District 5. And thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, City Council, for hearing me. I vigorously oppose this measure because I think it rewards illegal behavior. We had a really nice family neighborhood for many, many years, been in the family for many, many years as well, and things have changed a lot. Now we have places that were initially, or have been zoned, residential neighborhoods. Now we have garages and other structures that are becoming homes for people that weren't, weren't originally designed for that, and that's changing the character of our neighborhood substantially. I have a family, children, and everything. Now the garages that are being illegally rented are now homes to people that are looking into our, our family property. They're taking down the green space to build them, and they're not being, the illegal occupation is not being enforced or prosecuted. Actually, it's being enforced but not prosecuted.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
No, can I?
Your, your time is up. I gotta, I can only give you what I give everybody else. So thank you. So now, we will continue that item until tomorrow, and we can vote on items 11, 12, and 13. So let's, on those three items, 11, 12, and 13, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now we're gonna take up item 1A, Ms. Bay, Belinda Bay.
And Mr. President, as the speaker comes forward, there are requests to continue items on 1. 1C, continue to June 7, and 1K and 1L until May 23.
Okay, I don't see the speaker. Ms. Bay? Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Weezer, it's my understanding you wanted to say something on item 14?
Yes, Mr. President, just quite quickly, this item here, thanks to the work of Mr. Bonin, who introduced this matter with us, will change state law that will allow our city to continue to move forward in a more pedestrian-friendly manner. We all know how car-centric our city has developed over the years, but this will allow our pedestrians who want to cross the street not to be cited automatically just because there's a no-walking, no-crossing signal, and even if you have a few seconds to cross, the, our residents would often get cited for that. This allows people more time, and if they could cross safely, even if the countdown begins, we, people will not get cited. Incidentally, this has to be changed at state law. We had only been able to conduct ourselves in this manner because of state law, and we are bound by it. So thanks to the work of Assemblymember Santiago, when we brought this up to his attention, who represents, he represents downtown LA, he worked on it, got it through quickly, it's in Transportation Committee, and should go to the full assembly soon. So our support for this at this time is critical to making sure this continues to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Corretts?
I don't, I don't totally credit the city because we still currently stake out intersections, and the light changes to don't walk, and a second later, somebody steps off and walks, and we write them a ticket. So we could actually operate more responsibly ourselves by not doing that to the extent that we do, but the fact that we're actually giving directions statewide that that's inappropriate, I think is important, and it will send a message to our own people to knock it off as well, once we've actually changed the rules. So I think this is doubly important, and I appreciate Mr. Weezer and Mr. Bonin for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
President, thank you, Mr. Weezer, for the resolution on this. This is a good bill in Sacramento. It's important to get government off people's backs and on their sides, and this is an example of something that we are doing in terms of our enforcement that is really on the backs of pedestrians, and it is particularly onerous when somebody gets a ticket for this. You know, there's a, there's a pattern and a practice of there being stings in certain areas, many of them in downtown. They happen to disproportionately, at least anecdotally, disproportionately impact people who use mass transit, most of whom are transit-dependent and lower-income. And there's a real serious problem with this because not only is the fine that which we as a city impose, but then the county and the city impose other fines, and someone for, for crossing when it seems like you should be crossing as the countdown clock is going, telling you how much time you have left, gets fined, and they wind up with like a $300 ticket for this. So it really is particularly ridiculous. We've been trying to fight this at the local level, and Mr. Santiago's bill will be enormously helpful. So thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, and if I could get the sergeants to please clear the council chambers as we are preparing to go into closed session. It's not because you just walked in, General. It's not.
... respond to some type of emergency, returning home from school, culture, or reaching...
That's our message, not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home, stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.[1381.48]
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
They better than well. We begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not gonna tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the We tip hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. We tip hotline 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle. Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.